Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all of you who are joining us electronically. City Council, good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. It is the regular meeting of the City Council of Waverly, Iowa. This is Monday, October 21. We're called to order. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have in front of you a proposed agenda. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Welcome back, Mrs. Cornforth.
Thank you.
You know the drill. I'll call on you at the end of the meeting. If you have a question or something that's incredibly urgent, let me know. All right. Council, you have in front of you a set of minutes from the October 7th regular meeting. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of the October 7th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Now is the time for public comments on any item that is not currently on the agenda. If you want to speak to something that's out of the agenda, please rise now. I see no one rising. We'll move on. We're on the consent calendar, item F. It's all there in front of you. The only thing I see of urgent is the housing needs assessment is on there. That's great. We need that document. And I'm pretty excited to read it. Of course, I'm also kind of nerdy. Could I have a motion?
I will move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Can I have a clarification on item number five? So we have the pay request from Bolton and Mankin General Engineering Services. It was just kind of, it was not clear what that was used for. It kind of said general items. And I know that, given that we have recently changed our, gotten rid of our city engineer, I kind of think we should be keeping track of how the, I mean, how are spending money on, for this type of engineering? Removing the engineering position was a cost-saving measure. So we should keep track of what we're spending on engineering in-house or through these. So it just kind of says professional services, non-related engineering, general nature. I mostly just wanted to keep an eye on it, but...
No, we're tracking it completely. You see above that, you have deliverables, things that we're working through, plan review, project work. A lot of this is done by, items we're asking about that we need answers to. We don't have a breakdown question by question, but I don't know, Justin, do you want to shed some light on the other items?
Some of the larger items. You can see in June, we had a $10,000 deliverable. That was a GP2 permit that we needed for the sewer plant. That was not completed previously. That was something in order by the IDOR DNR. Other than that, most of these are deliverables on, or project work. Some of them are alley project that they designed. We can itemize them further out, but we started bigger and we moved it a little smaller because it becomes, becomes a little difficult to follow if you have so many different categories. So a lot more project reviews and plan reviews at the major items that we get from them.
Wait, that second sheet, so it looks like we have spent about $37,000 total on engineering services since April.
I draw your attention to item three. I went out to, well, I didn't go out, I was driving past my stomach, visit the all-inclusive. And it is really cool. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's a very impressive project.
You got to stay off until it's done, though.
Yeah, I got to stay off until it's done, but, boy, once it's ready. Okay, the consent calendar is in front of you. Can I have a motion?
I already have a motion.
Oh, thank you. You're right. Then, can, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We'll turn now to item G, regular business. If anyone wants to comment on regular business, please come up to the microphone before we reach that topic, so I know to call on you. Ready? Item one. Ordinance 1139A, an ordinance amending... Okay, it's been 40 years since I took Latin. Nunc pro tunc ordinance, number 1139, which amended the TIF ordinance by removing certain properties from division of revenue. This is the first reading.
I will move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1139A, an ordinance amending nunc pro tunc ordinance, number 1139, which amended ordinances, number 569, 585, 609, 638, 664, 733, 791, 853, 866, 892, 931, 736, 932, 978, 1025, 1053, 1060, 1066, 1080, and 1137, and providing that general property taxes shall no longer be divided on certain property located within the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Area in the city of Waverly, county of Bremer, state of Iowa, removing non-taxable property from division of revenue.
Second.
Thank you. And then Latin phrase...
This is the first reading. Somebody else gets this next, too.
The Latin phrase means "now and then," and it means "to repair an ordinance."
I said nunc pro tunc, but then that's probably a Midwestern accent saying Latin.
Yes.
In a very brief nutshell, we took the Waverly lots out and developed a long version of this. We shouldn't have taken them out because they may generate revenue in the next year or two to cause us to use our TIF. So we're putting them back in. That's the entire gist of this nunc pro tunc. All that is to get them back in when we probably shouldn't have taken them out, so...
Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Should be a roll call vote. Carla, let's do a roll call this time.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Draykow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
It was seven to zero. It passed. Item the second. This is the third and final reading of ordinance 1155, an ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter 105, Traffic Section 105.4.10. Additional parking restrictions to allow time-restricted parking spaces in municipal parking lots. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1155, an ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter 105, Traffic Section 105.4.10. Additional parking restrictions to allow time-restricted parking spaces in municipal parking lots.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Okay, I'm not going to let this go by without saying something, but my two cents were then. I still have some difficulty with this ordinance. As our ordinance currently stands, anyone can park in any parking space, in a municipal parking lot, other than handicap spaces. Handicap spaces are the only spaces, and those spaces have to be set aside under, I would assume it's the, Disabilities Act is why we have to have the handicap spaces, which we should have anyway. But this proposed change would be setting up special parking privileges in public lots to accommodate specific businesses. And if this passes, any entity or individual is going to be able to come to the City Council and request that there be some special parking privilege in a public lot that would benefit them for a specific purpose. It had the effect of reducing the number of spots available in that parking lot for general parking purposes. So if you've got a number of spots that you're restricting for a certain purpose, that means there are fewer spots available for general purposes. But my biggest concern here is that there are no guidelines or standards for the council to use when evaluating these requests. Because basically, this means that we're going to have to decide on a case-by-case basis when somebody comes to the council and says, hey, I would like to have these five spots in the public parking lot that's closest to my business, or closest to my house, or closest to my whatever, restricted for a specific restriction use. And how are we going to decide that? And we don't really have any way of deciding it right now. It's easy. No, you can't do it because all the parking spots in the public lot are not restricted. Now we're going to have, so hopefully it won't happen, but I'm sure it will. When you say it won't happen, then you know it's going to happen. Someone's going to want to have a specific restriction on parking spots in a public lot. And, you know, we're going to have to decide these on a case-by-case basis. There are no guardrails. We're kind of opening ourselves up to allegations of favoritism. Why did we put restriction on these spots and not on these spots? Or even, you know how people are, hanky-panky or some underhandedness, that, you know, we're getting paid under the table to put parking restrictions in some of these spots. So it just makes me very nervous that we're starting down a slippery slope here, and I know this is going to pass. I understand that. But I'm hoping that down the road, we don't look back on this and say, boy, that was really not a very smart thing to do to open up this can of worms. So my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I guess I would comment in response to that. Having been part of what I think was one of the earliest discussions about this with the business owner who originally brought up that this could be a need. My perception of what we discussed was that it could be a very good idea to have a couple of short-term parking spaces in every one of the city lots. And I guess that's kind of the way that I've been looking at it as I was reading through the materials is, why not have a couple spaces in every one of the city lots? And then we aren't showing favoritism, but we are accommodating whatever short-term needs businesses within those blocks might have.
Yeah, to me, this is the equivalent of an express lane at the grocery store. You know, you have a lane for 10 items or less, and you can be upset that you have 30 items and you can't use that lane. But the truth is that it speeds things up if there's a place for those people with short-term needs, people who aren't, you know, are going to be parking very briefly. You can use those, it makes, I think it just makes it more efficient than having all of those spots taken up by someone who's going to be there for two or three hours, if you just leave one spot available for short-term usage.
I always think about how will we enforce these things, right? So if you have a, I mean, I agree, I think it's handy to have the short-term parking spots, but how do you enforce that and make sure they move along?
And I don't know that it is enforceable. I think it's a sort of thing where you put the sign up and it's, you know, an honor system where people think that I'm leaving this available for people who are using it short-term. And if, if you want to be a jerk and park in there for three hours, you know, I don't think the police, I think the police have better things to do than enforce parking ordinances. But I also think that, you know, this is a small enough town. People recognize your car. If you're always parked in the fifth, in the five-minute parking lot for three hours, people are going to know who you are.
I hope you're not encouraging vigilante justice.
I'm not, I'm not, but I have nothing against side-eye.
Yeah, I think the other thing is, I always wonder, how do you enforce the people who are, I think, living near these lots and park there and never move their cars? And so we did hear from an adjacent business owner on that block who had that concern. You know, there are some cars that seem to be there that perhaps need to be provided parking by their landlord or whoever owns the buildings nearby, but that, you know, I think, you know, and I wonder, you know, if you have thoughts, Rod, about how, what would be some standards, or do you think it's possible to create sort of a guideline for future councils to use when looking at this? But, because it is a case-by-case basis to some degree, because there are different types of businesses on every block. Some of them need short-term parking, some don't, but...
I don't think it's possible to come up with a standard that would, you could measure anything against that standard. I just, I don't think it's possible. That's why I'm opposing it. I just don't think you can do it.
Well, I think we can set a standard of, you know, no more than one per block or something, kind of a density argument, but, you know, I do think the idea of someone trying to set aside five parking spaces for this is a bit excessive. I don't think this is parking for a particular business. This is parking for a particular usage. It's short-term parking.
I guess, I kind of have been back and forth on this, and to me, I was thinking this, what the third one was, I wasn't necessarily going to be in favor of marking any spots right away because I'm not sure that necessarily. And yeah, it's, it kind of, you know, it is a nicety, but I guess I'm leaning more along the lines of Rod now, that specifically, when we get to the enforcement, the idea of, of why have a law, why have an ordinance that you're not even going to be able to enforce, or you're not going to really try to enforce. It's not, what's the point of having it then? Other than to say, oh, look, we've got this possibility. Well, you know, if, if all of our backs of all of our businesses on Main Street had parking lot all the way through, we could have these randomly set along there, but it's not evenly distributed where the city parking lots are in town. So it's, it is going to lend itself to people saying, well, you know, I don't have a close spot for my business to be able to park people that run in and out. We are a small town. It's not that far to go from one to another. And there's limited spaces, and to me, before long, we're going to end up having to have, we're going to need to have parking spaces where we have charging stations, and then we're going to have to have parking spaces where we're going to have to have solar panels plugged in, and who knows what else? Hydrogen, you know, so...
Garbage disposal for the Back to the Future car flying kind of time travel?
Yeah. I, I'm not sure it's necessary at this point.
I guess I'd like to just make one other comment. And I'm struggling with how to say this that doesn't sound like I'm being, promoting favoritism, because I'm absolutely not, but I do think that if there are things that we can do to support our local business people, we should be doing that. And I think particularly with the bridge out now, you know, it's hard enough for businesses that are downtown to draw people downtown. And I just feel like we should do whatever we can to support them.
Any other discussion?
Raffi.
Yes.
Draykow.
No.
Cengis.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
The count of five, yes, and two, no. That it booked, huh? Yeah, yeah, so item three is discussion.
We need more discussion? Any point of the discussion was timing. When you want something brought to you, to have a formal declaration of how many lots, where, those kind of things. So that's the point of the discussion itself, not what you just went through, the process. So just wanted feedback on how soon, when you would like to see something actually put out there, those of you that want to see it.
I'm a fan of...
No offense, but I mean...
Is it worth, is it worth talking to the chamber about where, if there are certain businesses, or it'd be interesting to hear what the business community thinks about this and which businesses? Because I agree with Julie, I think if you're going to do something like this, it might be helpful to just do it in every lot, right? So it's, it's available throughout the business community. You know, so I guess if you did that, you don't necessarily need input from the chamber.
We did send a letter to every business affected by lots up and down the streets, and I had almost no feedback.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Literally have done two.
About this ordinance.
This exact ordinance.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So in the three readings, we've had less than a handful that responded, some pros, some not. So I mean, we tried to get some input before this even went through.
I suppose my thought is, I wouldn't want more than one per lot. Some of these lots, it might be a question of which end of the lot do you want it on?
Right.
I suppose it is a question of who are the business owners who are interested in such a thing? If we could identify who those business owners are, then we can see about, you know, where we might put those spaces in.
It can be any business, is why we looked at it this way. If you want to run in, drop a check off.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It doesn't, it's not just a restaurant, it's not a shop. It could be anything. So we were looking at a maximum two, so that's why we want the feedback to start with, and probably right in the middle of the front. So it's not leaning either way, depending on how it's situated.
Well, we're talking about the city lots, not the street parking.
Correct.
Okay.
Because a lot of other cities, they do meters, street parking, because that's a problem. Nobody can ever park in front of the businesses that don't have back alley parking like we do. And that's how they've accomplished it, is meters. And I certainly am not proposing we go to meters.
No.
So I think that's a terrible idea right now. But that's how they handle parking lots, that's how they handle front row lots, that's how they handle street parking. You see it everywhere. So that was the other alternative to help free up space for people. Because, speaking of businesses downtown, sometimes employees park in the prime places where the public would like to be, and that's some of the issue, too, that we run into and we hear about. And so this was trying to encourage a spot that, or two, that would constantly be turning over. As far as enforcement, I don't know that we drive around looking for somebody rolling the dice in a handicap spot. I've seen it many times. A lot of it's complaint-driven. In this community, in most communities, it's complaint-driven. If you see a car in there for half an hour, you might just get a call and they're going to chalk a tire in 15, 20 minutes, or you take it. That's how it's going to be handled, the same as all the other items that we do and have situated, whether it's parking on the street overnight or other ordinances we try to follow. So we did try to look at all that, we tried to build that in. It is, I agree, kind of open-ish, but it was a small step into this, instead of just jumping into where we're going to put five, we're going to put three, we're going to, we just wanted to trial and error it a little bit. Because again, that's why we put it in this way. The simple resolution can change how many, where, what it may be, and you have the authority then versus a three-reading adjustment of some sort that would take place.
Yeah.
What I, what I think we need to do is, if we're going to do this, we start small. Pick out the city lots that we have, one or two spots in each lot, and monitor it for six months. See if they're being used, if they're not being used. If, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be the police enforcing an ordinance, but, you know, maybe just have an employee or a volunteer go out there and just say, okay, how long have these cars actually been here? Just to gather some information on it.
Sure.
I think we're going to find that this is probably a solution, looking for a problem, frankly. But, you know, if, if we're going to do this, yeah, we'll run some experiments and see what happens, and if it seems to work okay and people like it, well, then I, not the first time in my life, I've been wrong.
I definitely like the idea of starting small, just one or two spaces in the different lots, and then, again, see how it is being used. And I mean, there, it may be used more over time as people learn that those spaces are there, too. I mean, it may be a question of people adjusting to that. There's always going to be that short-term parking if they need it.
And I would agree that whether it's one or two, you put it right in the middle.
Yeah.
This takes, there's no favoritism. Middle lots, middle spots. So how soon would you like to have something brought back to you to at least consider? Because it's pretty easy to take one or two, and we wouldn't meet again until November...
Soon as you're ready.
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
So it'll probably be first or second meeting in November, we'll bring you something to at least look at and see if it'll meet the need and go that way.
All right, ready to move on to number four? You appear ready? Second reading of ordinance 1156, an ordinance amending Chapter 53, Peddlers, Solicitors, Transient Merchants, and Mobile Food Vendors. Section 53.13, Mobile Food Vendor of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of the second reading of ordinance 1156, and ordinance amending Chapter 53, Peddlers, Solicitors, Transient Merchants, and Mobile Food Vendors. Section 53.13, Mobile Food Vendor, Sections 53.13.4, 53.13.5, 53.13.7, 53.13.7B, 53.13.7C, 53.13.7D, 53.13.7G, 53.13.7H, 53.13.7I, and 53.13.7K of the Waverly Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. Carla?
Draykow.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes, again. That was seven to zero. That passes. Resolution number 24-180, a resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Waverly and TRC Spendthrift Trust regarding 3,000 Fifth Avenue Northwest, Waverly, Iowa, including exception to Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter 103, Subdivisions, Section 103.7.08, Subsection 6, and 103.7.09, Subsection 5. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-180, as read by the mayor.
Second.
So just for clarification, if I was reading this correctly, it sounds like the short version is, just because the proximity of the surrounding areas, it didn't really make a lot of sense to force them to do all the infrastructure right now?
Right. Clear over to the other side of the property, which we normally would expect to be done. And we've actually put code in to claim that will be done now that we have that. And so Justin can certainly talk in more detail about it, but we have looked at it, we've talked to our engineering folks about it. It's not common in commercial property to force that necessarily, as it would be in a subdivision. I don't know, Justin, if you want to add anything about kind of what we're doing and why?
There is less than 200 foot across this frontage, so usually you have more separation between a mantle or a fire hydrant, so it becomes a little redundant if you have a fire hydrant with 104 feet from the previous one. Doesn't make a lot of sense for them to put the cost of this in until it needs to go somewhere. It puts up right to a house, a current residence, actually, so...
So if there is development that occurs, then they would put it in after the fact. That's a disagreement we'd accomplish versus having it up front, assuming there'll be something, but when it actually is needed, they will agree then to provide that crossing, which is different from what we've done in the past, when somebody said, no, we won't do it. Now we have at least an agreement to make it happen somehow, but at the time, it's needed for it all.
And it's also clear that this is tied to the property, not the property owner. So if he sells this to someone else, someone else takes it over, they also have the same obligation to extend the water or the utilities to the entered property.
Any more discussion? Carla, let's have a vote.
Cengis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Draykow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
That was seven to zero. Passed unanimously. Number six. Resolution 24-181, a resolution approving a plat of survey at 1020 Fourth Street Southwest to create parcel number two. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-181, a resolution approving a plat of survey at 1024th Street Southwest to create parcel two for James Jansen and Carla Jansen.
And that should actually be partial, parcel II.
Thank you.
Boy, we're having trouble with both our Latin and our Roman numerals. This is a tough night for the council. Any discussion on this?
So I'm on planning and zoning, so I can report to this. This is a case of there was land vacated by Iowa DOT, which has been given to them. So they have these, I believe it's three different plots. They would like to merge them into a single plot because they have plans to eventually put up a shed, and this way it will not be too close to a property line, so they will not require a special provisional use to do that if these are merged into a single plot.
Thank you. Any discussion? You appear ready? Carla?
Myers.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Drinka?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
That was seven to zero, passed unanimously. Item eight, Resolution 24-182, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract for the material cold storage building, wall construction project at the Public Services Center. Can I have a motion?
Remove approval of Resolution 24-182, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract for the material cold storage building, wall construction project at Public Services Center for the amount of $119,360.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
So how's this compared to what we approved last time? Two weeks ago, we had the same, we were approving, like, to do it, and this is approving the contract?
You're awarding the bid to get it done, this is now the documentation to make that happen, the actual contract, bonds, bidding, et cetera.
Okay.
So always a two-step process, sometimes we've done it same meeting, want to make sure everything came in in time, so we're doing it separately this time.
But I recognize that dollar amount, so that's how I knew it was the exact same one, so, okay.
And just a reminder for the people keeping track at home, cold storage means not heated. It doesn't mean refrigerated.
It's not refrigerated, no.
Any other discussion? You look ready to vote. Carla?
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Drinka?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That was seven to zero, passed unanimously. Item eight, Resolution 24-183, a resolution accepting the asphalt patching Fall 2024 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one to D&amp;M Asphalt Services of New Hampton, Iowa. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-183, a resolution accepting the asphalt patching Fall 2024 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $20,867.70 as the final payment to D&amp;M Asphalt Services of New Hampton, Iowa.
Thank you. Any discussion? Second. And second. Thanks, Tim.
So was this the first time we've used this company, and were you pleased with them?
Yes, this is the first time we've used this company. They actually bid last spring, I believe, when we had disqualified their bid because of inaccuracies. It worked, we did a good job. It was a little different, working with a different contractor, we kind of used the same two or three we use all the time, so we worked around it, they got everything done in time and fashion, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? You ready to vote? Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Drinka?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed seven to zero unanimously.
That takes us to item H, reports and boards and commissions, you have them in front of you. Any questions or comments?
About historic preservation, I noticed that there, Chris Brunkhorst, who's led them for quite a while, is stepping away as leader, so I just want to thank her for her service. She's been on that commission a long time, leading it, so appreciate that.
Very good. Yes. Staff updates. James?
Good gentleman. Just a reminder that the Candlelight Walk is coming up, Saturday, November 2nd, from 5:00 until 7:00. We will start just to the south of Quikstar East out here, and go about a three-quarters of a mile or so off the trail, there'll be a turnaround, nice little bonfire, Nestle cocoa, all that good stuff. So 5 to 7, if you'd like to help set up, it'll be at 4:00.
Question, Garrett. Has there been any more news on the fire, First Home Park?
At the playground?
Yeah.
No, no more news on that at this point. We're still waiting.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilperson Bergen?
I wanted to point out that we have the Jack-o'-lantern night downtown on Thursday, so encourage people to head to downtown for that. That's, I think, 6:00 PM downtown. I assume it's both sides of the river, although it may not be an easy task to do both of them, at least not on foot. And I also wanted to point out the Lion's Pancake Breakfast is on Sunday, for each building, so good time to go out and support local service organization and get yourself some pancakes. And anyone who wants to discuss city council business, I will be at the Bream Avenue Brewery after the meeting.
Excellent. Councilperson Jones?
Loving tonight.
Councilperson Meyer? Councilperson Cangis?
Anybody want to sing?
Yes.
It's somebody's birthday.
It's somebody's birthday.
Somebody's birthday.
When I lack in talent, I make up foreign volume.
Excellent.
I think we better turn the mic off.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear mayor, happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much. You are more kind than musical.
And I just would like to point it out, the Roman tent had it easy in school, especially with math, because they only had to learn to count from one to five.
Okay. Castleperson Raffi?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm truly honored that you decided to spend your birthday here at the city council meeting rather than with your family, and I'm very, very disappointed that you did not bring cake.
Yeah. Councilperson Rafi?
Nothing for me.
Councilperson Wolf?
In order to give people time to read, the Human Equity and Diversity Book Club is going to be November 11th at 6:00 PM in this Waverly Civic Center, and the book is a graphic novel called Unrig: How to Fix Our Broken Democracy by Daniel Newman, and the Waverly Public Library will have copies available. And I'll be at Get Roasted for any city business from 11:30 to 1:00 on Friday.
Thank you. Guest Councilperson Cornforth?
I do not have any questions or comments this evening.
Wow. All right.
Really, Susan, that kind of surprises me.
Well, actually, it's just that Councilperson Rafi and I are on the same page, and she already said the only thing I needed to say, so it's okay.
And the library's back open, yes? Are we open?
Yes.
Today, I think it's open.
Yes, today, yes.
No.